Just a few minutes early, everybody's here, the Vice President, we'll go ahead and call him to order. The opening session moment of silence will be led by Mr. Wayne Taylor, followed by President of Allegiance, by Mr. William Atton.
Please stand and join me at a moment of silence.
Thank you.
.........................................................................................................
Before we have approval of the December eighth, twenty twenty four minutes, those were supplied in your packet. Do you have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion, I'll say it.
Motion by Rick Dotson, second by Mr. Stonecifer, you did say second.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion about having revisions made? We may. All right, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, any additions or deletions to proposed agenda? Do we have any of those? Number six, approval of the January twelfth, twenty twenty one meeting agenda? Do we have a motion for that? Motion to approve this one's agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Rick Dotson, second by Mitch Stonecifer. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Executive action items. Number one, consideration of contract with the Director of Schools.
I make the motion to transfer the Director to a different or another position.
I second that motion.
Hold on just one second. A motion by Mr. Wayne Taylor to transfer the Director to another position, is that just the discretion of the Board or that another Director?
Do you want to delay, delay for a second?
We just made a motion to transfer the Director of Schools to a different position.
At the discretion of interim Director.
Do you want Dr. Director of Schools?
Hold on just one second. And there's a motion by Rick Dotson. Or motion by Wayne Taylor and a second by Rick Dotson, I apologize and stand corrected now. Discussion.
Do you want Dr. Mr. Wayne Taylor?
Yes, sir, I have spoken to Mr. Wayne Taylor. During our conversation, Mr. Wayne Taylor felt that the relationship between himself and the Board is not what it should be, and doesn't know if that could be directed or changed.
When did you all get back to it?
We've discussed this twice over the last couple of months since his contract was under discussion in the meeting.
The only thing that I've said about his whole situation is that in ten years, we went through, I don't have to, it seems like when the new board comes along, they're ready to change us too, change that director to somewhere else. And I'm sure probably two years down the road, I won't be here, but it'll happen again. Two years down the road, it'll happen again. Mr. Rupert, you've been through this before, you know that what I'm talking about.
Anyone else?
What is going to be the cost of this overall?
The BEP allows Overton County Schools a hundred and four thousand dollars a year for the Director's contract. We currently pay our Director eighty-seven thousand, so that's fourteen thousand over four years. Overton County Schools has made sixty-seven thousand dollars off the Director's contract, should have made sixty-seven thousand dollars off the Director's contract. So until there is a permanent Director in place, there will be no one else that a Director is ready to pay.
With the, with the BEP, does it do the Director's office, or is it just the Director's salary?
It is for the Director. I did not get into line items for insurance, that type thing, because we're obligated for that for every employee. That's not allocated by BEP.
Can I speak? So comment was made, every time there's a new board, there's a new election every two years, and there's new people rolling on and rolling off. Those elections are for the public to decide whether or not they're happy with the way the direction the school is going. And those representatives of those districts, including me, including you, are chosen to execute the will of the people. And so when you say there's a new board, it's kind of me and Wayne Taylor, the new people on the board, and so.
Ambrose.
Ambrose, correct. And so whenever the people speak, they want to change.
But nobody ran against you.
Excuse me, we're discussing that.
I know that.
Thank you.
So when people vote, they speak, and they let people to be the representative to execute their will. And so that's what we're here for. You have a vote to represent your constituents, just like I did. And so I want to execute mine based upon the performance that I've seen. And so in two years, you'll have an opportunity to run again if the constituency in the district you live in want you back. So that's how I feel about it.
I understand what you're saying, I do.
Well, but you're, but you're alluding to the fact that it's the new people on, on the board.
Okay, okay.
This Director.
Real quick, real quick, any other discussion? Ms. Mountain, we'll need a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mike Hayes.
Yes.
Dr. Stiles.
No.
Wayne Taylor.
Yes.
William Atston.
No.
Larry Luper.
No.
Mitch Stonecifer.
Yes.
Rick Dotson.
Yes.
Darman Hicks.
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick.
No.
Six yes, four no.
That motion does carry to transfer the Director to the discretion, discretion of the interim Director. With that said, I make a motion to suspend number four on policy five point zero, or five point eight zero one, appoint Dr. Donnie Holman as interim Director of Schools until we enter into contract with a permanent Director with a deadline of July the thirty, or the last day of July, twenty twenty-two.
Shouldn't we be making nominations if we want to be the interim Director?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? When was the motion you just made effective?
To transfer?
Mm-hmm.
That would be effective, I'm guessing immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Take nominations?
Yeah, you just can't, you just can't go up and appoint somebody, you have to have the.
You're correct, I just made a motion. I just made a motion to appoint someone, we will vote on that. Then we will start a application process.
Well, you're outside.
Then you start the process and go through your applications and qualifications.
Well, what bothers me more is that, I didn't know if that was Mr. Holman, who, who selected him, who, who went to him and talked to him?
I, I just made a motion. If there's a second, we will discuss it, if not.
But you said Donnie Holman's name.
I sure did, yes, sir, I did.
You said that, and, and you, you needed to back up here and start to think that what you said.
Sure, hold on just a second, hold on just a second.
I wouldn't say the other people went to and asked.
Who would you like to ask? If you, who do you want to ask? I just made a motion.
I don't think he had it.
Please hold, I made a motion, is there a second for that?
I'll second.
A second by Wayne Taylor. Now, can we have a roll call vote?
What was that date that you said?
Last day of July, twenty twenty-two. Would be the expiration of this?
It'd be June.
June, I'm sorry, yes, June.
Why don't we vote now here?
To appoint Donnie Holman as an interim Director until we apply, or take applications or enter into contract with a full-time Director.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Have you spoke to Dr. Holman? Is he willing to take this?
Uh, Dr. Holman, I did not speak to him directly as if he would be a full-time Director. Dr. Holman would fulfill whatever need the schools ask of him.
Why don't we push this down the deck, he's our Assistant Director out there.
Ms. Eldridge is retiring at the end of the school year, so if you're not entered into contract with a permanent Director by the end of the year.
Is that not when we put the deadline?
You'll have to go, hold on just a second, no. Twenty twenty-two would be the end of the current contract. Ms. Eldridge is retiring at the end of the school year, so if you're not in contract with a permanent Director by then, you go through this process again.
So let, let me clarify this. The interim contract will be effective until July?
June, last day of June.
Last day of June, twenty twenty-two.
No, 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 no. I said until we enter into contract with a permanent Director with a deadline of that. So we have to have it done by the end of this current contract.
And are we paying out Dr. Wayne Taylor's contract and also paying interim Director's salary?
The interim Director will stay on his current salary unless he is employed full-time as Director.
Do we have a contract made up for the interim Director?
Not at this time.
When will we be voting on that contract?
When would you like to? First, let's go through this motion, then we'll discuss that. So maybe we'll please have a roll call vote.
Let me make sure I've got this right. We're going to enter into a contract for interim Director of Schools with Donnie Holman ending six?
No, 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 we're not entering into a contract. We are appointing, I made a motion to appoint Dr. Holman as interim Director. So there will be no contract entering with Dr. Holman. As interim Director.
Six thirty of twenty twenty-two, right?
Last day of July, yes, that's the deadline.
So regardless of who's appointed the interim?
Yes.
The Board policy says that the interim Director cannot apply for the full-time Director position unless the Board clarifies that.
Yes.
So are we okay with any, whoever the interim Director is applying for the full-time position, whoever that may be? I just want to clear that up, so whoever the interim is can apply for the full-time.
Sure.
I mean, I know we've brought that up in the past for an interim, so I don't think there's ever been an issue that the interim could not apply for the full-time.
And I don't know that any of it has been denied.
I just want to make sure that's clear before, that whoever the interim is can apply for the full-time position.
We get it, but we're not entering into a contract. What you're saying is you want to appoint Donnie Holman to serve the position until, until, until the position is posted and other people have a chance to apply, and we can open it up for interviews and that, go through the process.
That's correct, with a deadline of the current contract.
Okay.
Because I, I don't know that it can be done by the end of the school year. Ms. Eldridge is retiring, she has no intentions or will to leave the Director of Schools, by knowledge, or fill in as an interim. I'm sure she would do whatever was asked of her, she always asked, but.
And we haven't talked to Donnie Holman to see if he even wants it?
Dr. Holman told me he would do whatever was asked by the schools of him. I don't know if he wants to be a full-time Director, I do not know.
But you have talked to him?
Yes.
Sir, we got a motion and a second.
I made a motion.
I did.
Who's second?
Wayne's able.
So whoever the interim is can apply for the full-time.
Yes.
Okay.
So can we please have a roll call vote on that as well?
Bruce Hedges.
Yes.
Mike Hayes.
Yes.
Dr. Stiles.
No.
Wayne Taylor.
Yes.
William Atston.
No.
Larry Luper.
No.
Mitch Stonecifer.
Yes.
Rick Dotson.
Yes.
Darman Hicks.
Yes.
Mike Gilpatrick.
No.
Six yes and four no.
Now, in that motion I made, I did note to suspend number four of policy of five point eight zero one. Our actual policy of hiring and appointing Directors isn't fully conbliable with the law. There's a stipulation in that that will have to be removed. That's why in my motion that was.
What's that stipulation?
A two-thirds majority, it's against the law to have a two-thirds majority, or hold a two-third majority stipulation to a Board. So, now, on to consent agenda items. Approve the leave of absence for educational purposes for senior lead better from one nineteen twenty twenty-one to four thirty twenty twenty-one. Approve the leave of absence from Carrie Aldrich from eleven seventeen twenty twenty to one four twenty twenty-one. Approve the leave of absence for Lauren Wood from five three twenty twenty-one to an open date. For the leave of absence for Lisa Lightford from twelve seven twenty twenty to three twenty-two twenty twenty-one. And next, we have approval of some policy readings. I asked for an update of what changes would be made to that, those were not supplied in the packet. Was in contact with the TSBA representative today. Those changes were, there were some wording changes, but they were to update due to laws. And next is approve general purpose budget amendment number one.
We haven't discussed the A. Roberts Playground.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. If we could finish this consent agenda items, I'll back up. The general purpose budget amendment, I'm sorry, I took my notes and really overlooked them. General purpose budget amendment number one, that was supplied in your packet, and what those are, carryover monies that we had at the end of last year that, let me find it real quick, it had our phone system upgrades, security upgrades, the entryways where we received the grant, the entryway upgrades, extra monies had to be taken out to cover that. The CKLA and the math curriculums were also in that. There's also an Amplify curriculum, those were in that. So if I could get a motion to.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
All right, thank you. By Mitch Stonecifer, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by William Atston. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now back to the executive action items. Consider approval of A. Roberts Playground upgrades. Those were emailed out separately in, in a separate packet, you should have copied them tonight with a letter from Brandon Cross, Principal of A. Roberts. To my knowledge, and Ms. Mountain, please correct me if I'm wrong, these, these upgrades are paid for by the A. H. PTO?
That's my understanding, I suppose.
Is that correct? So there should not be any monies coming from our general purpose to cover this, this, to my knowledge, is covered by the school. And they are also asking permission to sell their scrap that is removed to Cooper's recycling and put back into their PTO account.
So when I did the tour of the schools, Brandon took me out, showed me the playground equipment, and the equipment is in disrepair and needs to be replaced, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the playground upgrades and to allow them to sell their scrap metal to Cooper's Recycling.
Motion by Mitch Stonecifer.
I'll second.
Second by Mike Hayes. Ms. Mountain, did you catch all that motion?
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion on that matter? Before the discussion, everybody in favor of that, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New business items, discussion of the fund balance proposal. As we met last, last month, there was some, I'll give you guys a handout of some maintenance upgrades and things we've done to the schools. Let's see here, I was going to say this for the work session, but I want to incorporate it right here. We will be receiving more stimulus money from the federal government, which does have stipulations, and those stipulations are for enhancing learning. So with that said, once we know the exact dollar amount and have the stipulations in place, a lot of this money should be able to go to Williams' proposal. With that said, the grants and that type thing won't be able to be incorporated in that proposal, but we'll just, we'll go through the list and what can be, will be. And this will be, to my knowledge, a substantial amount of money.
About ballpark?
About ballpark, about two point seven million dollars. Yes, sir.
I, I got a email from Ron Ball, he was our Johnson Control Rep, and he had pulled it off the state website, and I think last May, June, whenever we got the first round of money, it was like seven hundred and eighty thousand. This time, the exact number was two million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, that's what he sent me that he pulled off the website. And, and there's a list of things that he referred to, and we can get together, or however the committee wants to do it, but improved condition to slow the spread of the virus, resources for principals for their needs, PPU sanitation, and this come off the, the He Rules Act website and the state website, improved preparedness, specific needs for disadvantaged children, money for training staff and sanitation and PPU use, purchasing PPU supplies, planning for school closures, for the IT hardware and software for remote learning, services to support student health, supporting after-school and summer learning programs, student learning loss. Then one, the reason Ron said it to me was that you can use it to help some building repairs with HVAC to improve air quality, and I know based on our conversations from the Building Committee two years ago, we got three hundred and forty-four units across the whole county, and over two hundred and something of those were put in for the two thousand project that we did, so they're thirty years old almost, or twenty-one years old. So, I mean, we can get together out of that whole money and just figure out who to allocate that for and use that toward Williams' program too, so hopefully it'll help everybody.
So yes, as far as the fund balance proposal, we are going to try our best to incorporate what we can of that proposal into those monies, because the whole point of those was to add monies into our classrooms for instructional use. So we'll have more information at our next board meeting for that. The next new business item, discussion of the pay scale proposal. Ms. Atston, you.
Thank you, everybody. Some of the information that I found out while I was doing this was that the last raise was given seven years ago in two thousand and thirteen, to the support staff, and I believe it was a dollar on the hour. The total budget of the support staff currently is three million, five hundred, twenty-five thousand, fifty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. That is plus eighteen percent for all benefits. So there's an eighteen percent in there that is added to that. The cost of every penny that we would spend giving a raise would be roughly thirty-one thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and eighty cents, plus that eighteen percent. And at the end of the year, each support staff receives a longevity bonus at the end of the year, and it breaks down to a five cent, five cent bonus for every year worked, times how many hours were worked that year. Going off of that and all the information that I've found, the proposal that I give to the votes for, the committee that I was on, the proposal I was giving to them for discussion, proposed giving the support staff a five cent pay raise on the fifteen-year scale. It'll reward the people that's been with the school system for the longest, so if you've been here for fifteen years, you'll see an immediate jump up of, with the five cents, it would be seventy-five cents on the hour, and we'd make the pay scale retroactive. So what would happen with that would be that everybody would get time served here, so if they've been for fifteen years, they're immediately going to get that for fifteen years being raised, ten years, five years, however that goes. The total cost with the five cent rate, cent pay raise would be three million, seven hundred, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred, ninety dollars and five cents. That's a total increase in the BEP, well, the total, total cost in the payroll of two hundred and four thousand, six hundred, thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, plus that eighteen percent. Both those numbers will be plus eighteen percent for the, like, Fortman's Call, all the other stuff that we cover for the employees. On the very end page, I listed a proposal of the new pay scale. I will tell you all, I did change some things in the pay scale because it became apparent to me that, like, the maintenance supervisor, if we have somebody that was hourly, with you having an HBC tech, that by the time they got it to fifteen years, they would be making more than the supervisor would. So I bumped the supervisor up just a little bit to give them to make it where they were making more. That was the same way with the mechanics. If you had a transportation supervisor, at the end of the pay scale, the master mechanic was making, I believe, the same amount as the transportation supervisor. So I bumped up the transportation supervisors a little bit, which those are positions that we don't currently have anybody filling. The, the transportation supervisor and maintenance supervisor is filled by a salary position of a teacher, so we don't actually have anybody in those positions, but in updating the pay scale, I made changes to those so that they would. I also made changes and gave the, gave it on this pay scale where the LPNs for the school system, they were at a max of, I think it was fourteen dollars, it was fourteen dollars and something, and they never made any more money, no matter how long they were with the school system. So I did put them on a increase over the fifteen years also, I think theirs was ten cents. So they'll increase it ten cents over the fifteen years to sort of give them a bonus for being, staying with us for as long as they do. Those are the main changes that I have there, so I'll open it up. I will tell you this, I also, in my calculations for that, did what, what would be for a dollar, which would be six cents over fifteen years, the total cost would be three million, seven hundred, sixty-five thousand, five hundred, ninety-three dollars and eighty-five cents, plus the eight percent. I did not include this with the proposal there, but I did get the numbers for everybody, so they would have them.
I'm sorry, William, can you give me that number again real quick?
Three million, seven hundred, sixty-five thousand, five hundred, ninety-three dollars and eighty-five cents, plus eighteen percent.
Thank you.
The total increase would be two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred, thirty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. That would be for a, a dollar over the fifteen years. For a dollar fifty over the fifteen years, which breaks down to ten cents, the total cost of that would be three million, nine hundred, nine hundred, nine thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and five cents, plus the eighteen percent, for a total increase of three hundred, eighty-four thousand, one hundred, fifty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, plus the eighteen percent. For two dollars over fifteen years, it would break down to be about thirteen cent on the pay scale. The total cost would be four million, sixteen thousand, nine hundred, twenty dollars and forty-five cents, plus the eighteen percent, and the total change in budget would be four hundred, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred, sixty-three dollars and fifteen cents, plus the eighteen percent.
What's the total amount again, William, pull up.
Four million, sixteen thousand, nine hundred, twenty dollars and forty-five cents.
Thank you.
To keep in mind on this, that money would be, would have to be budgeted every year. That's not a one-time expenditure, that would be an increase that we would have to budget for every single year.
So this current proposal you have here is how much over fifteen?
It's, it's seventy-five cents, it's five cents. That's what the pay scale is there, and I just ran the numbers for the.
Nobody went backwards or anything?
Not to my knowledge. It's not my intention that anybody would go backwards, hopefully everybody would be.
All right. And you mentioned retroactive, what?
What I mean by that is, like, we wouldn't start it today and say that by the time you get fifteen years, you're going to get that full seventy-five cents.
So they, so if you're making. So they, so if you're making fifteen today, and if this is approved, then the new one's fifteen fifty, you start at fifteen fifty.
Yes, it's next year. We would make it effective next.
Starting school twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Yes. So that would, um, so if you were here for fifteen years, you would automatically get the seventy-five cents. If you were here for ten years and five years, it would decrease five cents over the years. That way, the people that have been with the school system the longest would receive more money than people that had just been hired this year. Any other questions?
Is there any action to be taken on this pay scale proposal?
Say we put it on the next uh agenda and vote for it then?
Okay.
So are you, are you, remember recommending the seventy-five cent, what you proposed?
Yes, I was recommending the five cents because the reason that I recommend that is that would be the uh two hundred four thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, plus the eighteen percent. When we were looking at the budget and everything, that is a number that we are comfortable it being added, that we can sustain every year and not have a problem with.
When you say we, who, who are you talking about, we?
Me and Heather when we were looking at the budget.
Did the entire committee come up with this, or was this?
That, that was what I was presenting to the entire committee.
Okay.
That's what, that's the reason that I said for us to put it on next, next meeting.
Cause I was on a committee and I wasn't able to be here.
Yeah, and that's why I said, so let's put it on the next meeting, since we have time to review.
Can you send all the figures from the, from all those different uh levels that you talked about? Can you share that?
Yes, I can get those in a minute.
Those numbers you have, William, if everybody uh in your next packet, if those just get sent out in the next packet.
What I, what I will do with that is I'll have it in this form right here, so I'll just send it out as the pay scale.
Sure.
For everybody to have, and I'll actually send it out after this meeting, so everybody can see it.
Okay, good enough.
I, I think we need to do something for him, I mean, it's been forever since they've had anything.
But, yeah, just all three options, information, and uh we will put that on the next month's agenda to vote with one of those pay scales. Anything else on that? Special recognition, we have the OCA's Ms. Islander here with us.
Yes, ma'am.
I couldn't see you back there, so.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, the only thing that OCA would like to bring to your attention has to do with the use of the gyms in the schools. Because of COVID, we haven't been able to use those gyms, but the ball teams have. And now that the weather has gotten really bad, we'd like for somebody to do some investigating and see if we can find a way to open up those gyms so the kids can use them for their P E. Because they aren't able to go outside, and really, when they're doing P E in the classroom, they're closer together than they would be if they were in the gym. So that's, that's something that we'd like for y'all to look into and see if we can open up those gyms for those kids to use. Thank you.
Real quick, uh I want to thank over the county health department. Uh they stood out in the elements and supplied uh vaccines with employees that chose to take those, uh so thank you to the health department. Anybody else have anything before we adjourn the meeting?
I'd just like to thank all of our staff and all of our students. It, it's been a rough, tough year on them. I mean, they, they've really stepped up and done a terrific job, the whole bunch.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chris.
Second.
By Chris Dawson, the second, uh Mitch Stonesifer, to adjourn. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, real quick, uh, does anybody have anything for a work session?
I just, I was gonna have the building committee mention before the meeting for now, but I had to go all over the country today, and I didn't get back in time, so I'll uh I'll just send a text out and see the committee can agree on a time, or maybe before the next meeting, we kind of go over some things about the football.
I have, uh, just real quick, uh, I got some notes somewhere here, if I had to get to them. Uh, the uh stimulus money, we talked about that earlier. It's gonna be a substantial amount. We got a little over seven hundred thousand back earlier in the spring. They estimate this should be around the four times that amount. Uh, once we have more information on that, we'll get that supplied out to everyone. Uh and the stipulations, cause it can only be used for certain things, as Mike said.
Mike, can you share that with us, the, can you send that to us, the things, options that we could use that for?
Yeah, I'll pull it up the website and snapshot it and give it to you.
Now, uh fleet vehicles. We set aside money back in July to buy a couple of vehicles. As we opened the bids, uh there was a local bid that was the higher bid. The lower bid was out of state. It was the state bid, ever.
Um, I've talked to the guys at the garage, and they're totally checking on it. But they're going into bus inspection this time.
So, uh how do you, however you guys want to handle that, we can put it on next month's agenda to uh vote one or the other. Uh, we can uh check the state bid and see what it is, and factor that in. Uh, but our policy is, is the lower bid, but it's at our discretion, so.
What was the difference in the bid? Do you have any idea?
It was
Per vehicle?
Uh, no, they, they
They blunt it together.
They blunt them all together.
Three, three vehicles?
That's correct. Two trucks and they uh
Was it a significant? Was it a significant amount, difference between the two bids?
Was it twenty thousand, maybe?
I mean
Twenty thousand, maybe?
I, I was gonna say the fifteen to twenty thousand range.
I'd have to go back and review.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was a substantial amount, but so, uh, we will have the numbers for the state bid at the uh next, next meeting. That way we can decide which route to go with that. I, I believe one was out of Coolville, and the other was out of South Carolina?
South Carolina, North Carolina?
Yeah, so so if you do go with the lower bid, we're gonna have to pay big uh travel.
Transportation maintenance, one for you.
And uh last thing to uh discuss real quick, uh as of July thirty-first, the uh COVID leave for the employees uh ended, do we want to consider extending the COVID leave for employees that are quarantined?
Ended in December.
Ended in December, yes. The thirty-first, is that correct? So do we want to consider uh extending our COVID leave, uh because this is not mandated. It'd be something that we would be doing, and we would be uh uh footing the bill for, for our employees that are either quarantined or positive with COVID.
Well, I, I don't think we hold anything negative against them. If they're quarantined, they're
I think we'll come down with it. I think they should, they should like try to do it.
Should that be, definitely considered, if they're not?
Yes, so is that something you guys want to address the next meeting to vote on?
With their money's not budgeted in our budget.
That's correct. Our, we already budgeted the money for the uh payroll, so as far as the budget aspect, it will not affect us, or it will affect us could be having enough employees to go around, uh like the situation we're in at the high school now, so. But the only difference would be, uh we would be paying for the relief instead of them taking their personal sick time. So if that's something you guys want to put on next month's agenda to vote? Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Nobody has anything else? We'll end the work session. Thank you.